Team Blacksburg Mayor and Town Council Candidate Forum. Tonight's forum is co-sponsored by the Montgomery County League of Women Voters and the Montgomery County Rathford City Floyd County Branch of the NAACP. My name is Karen Jones and I am pleased to be your moderator for this evening. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we begin our candidate forum, we do ask that all mobile communication devices are turned off and remain off during the duration of the forum. Our candidates tonight have also been requested not to make audio or videotapes of this forum, and candidates must also agree not to use audio or visual recordings of the forums in their campaign. Tonight's forum is being broadcast live on WTOB and is being videotaped by the town of Blacksburg videographer. The video will be available on YouTube with a link on the League of Women Voters website, which is www.lwvmcva.org, and you will also be able to view it on the NAACP's Facebook page. The forum will also be replayed on the Town of Blacksburg Local Access TV Channel, Channel 2. Questions for tonight's forum will come directly from you all here this evening. As you enter, our greeters provided you with index cards for your questions. If you did not receive an index card, our helpers also have them, and we'll be able to distribute them throughout the evening. When your questions are ready, our helpers will collect your cards and give them to the screeners. The screeners will review questions for duplications and variety, and then pass them on to me. So don't be shy. We encourage you all to ask and submit questions. For each question, each candidate will have a minute to answer the question, and then anyone who has a rebuttal will have 40 seconds to do so. The question period for tonight's forum will end at about 8:15 PM, and then each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. The forum guidelines have been distributed so you know what is expected of our candidates and of you. We do ask that you reserve your applause until the end of the forum. Also, each of tonight's candidates were asked to provide a short biography and to respond to pertinent policy questions. The League copies their responses without editing, and their answers are the basis of the League of Women Voter Guides. Copies are provided in the foyer, and you may also view them on the League's website or pick up copies at the local libraries. I would like to introduce the people that are here helping us tonight so that you will know who they all are. Our greeters for the evening are Ms. Roxy Palmer, Ms. Phyllis Albritton, Ms. Nancy Warren, Ms. Felicia Hall, and Ms. Betty Anderson. Our helpers are Ms. Lynn Brammer, Ms. Judy Kerwin, and Ms. Anne Hawthorne. And our screeners for the evening, who are to my left, are Ms. Carol Linker, Ms. Angela Seals, and Ms. Carolyn Rude. And our timers, who are to my right, are Jana Rubel and -- you are not --
They traded.
They traded? Oh! They switched it on me, so I apologize. So now, I'm excited to introduce the candidates who are seated. They are seated alphabetically. To my right, we have our candidates for mayor, Kusia Chatra, Leslie Hager Smith, and Ed LaHorn. And to my left, we have our town council candidates, Susan Anderson, Lauren Coliver, Ken Jones, and Susan Mattingly. So we'll begin our questions this evening, and the subject matter will be traffic and parking, public transportation, and cycling. So our first question is, how do you specifically envision solutions to Blacksburg traffic and parking issues? And we will begin with Ms. Kusia Chatra, and you have one minute.
Thank you very much. Well, we do have a major traffic problem coming up on our hands because as we know Virginia Tech will be growing by 6,000 students in 10 years. So we had lots of different opportunities to alleviate traffic in the past. We were going to make a connector from Patrick Henry Drive to Graves Avenue, but we couldn't do that because of the Hoag property. We did not get the easement for that. We were going to connect Hubbard Street to Southgate as well as the Country Club to Southgate, but we decided to take that out of our comprehensive plan in the past because of the neighborhoods that were involved. So what we need to do now, moving forward, is alleviate that by perhaps thinking about the Patrick Henry connector to perhaps Clay Street, and also think about it in a different way. Maybe we should start looking at redeveloping our student housing so that we have density in places where people can walk and ride bikes and get to point A to point B with different modes of transportation besides using a car.
Leslie?
That's a good recap of the history of some mistakes that we have made, and I think that what is necessary is, in this important year when we're doing a five-year update of the comprehensive plan, I invite the people in this room to show up, to speak up, and explain to all your elected officials and our staff that it is time for us to put some traffic solutions back into our comp plan. That's where these new solutions will derive from. We are undergoing a study right now of the Prices Fork corridor, and there are a lot of things that can be done to improve that spot, including better bicycle facilities, better walkability, and possibly some traffic calming. So it's a fact that our small town only has two arterials, one east-west, one north-south. That's a problem that we'll be stuck with until we work together to make some improvements.
As I've campaigned around town, one of the things that's been voiced consistently to me is the traffic issue, especially around roads through town and across town. In fact, it keeps many have said, "I don't come downtown because of the traffic," but also because of parking. One thing that's been voiced consistently also is, can we consider an idea that was proposed in the past, Main Street one way, Progress the other way? Those sorts of ideas, I think people are willing to consider different things at this point as we try to tackle that issue. We have the potential of the old Blacksburg Middle School property being developed, which could add to traffic issues, as well as the Baptist Church if that were ever developed. But I think it also highlights that there hasn't been much focus on infrastructure issues the last few years with council, and in some ways, we're starting from ground zero on that.
Thank you. Susan?
Yes, concerning vehicular traffic, we did the South Main Transportation Task Force a few years ago, about a decade ago, and we need to keep implementing those recommendations. I think the old middle school being redeveloped is going to give us many more parking issues on Main Street. And as Leslie mentioned, the Prices Fork corridor study is helping us greatly trying to alleviate some problems there, as well as have more bicycle lanes, more pedestrian-friendly areas. As far as the downtown goes, you probably know that the town has purchased the property behind the Cellar Restaurant, and we have in our plan to make a parking garage back there, so that will help alleviate parking issues in the downtown. The Downtown Revitalization Committee, though, has done a wonderful parking brochures, a brochure, and that's available on the web as well as in our local community sites like the KO Office. And the Corridor Committee, of course, is always looking at transportation issues, too. Finally, the comp plan is being worked on.
Lauren?
Well, our downtown is really a Main Street, obviously, and I'd love to see us think about alternative routes, using Progress or Draper, and really encouraging folks to utilize other avenues to get in and around downtown. We also need to increase access to Blacksburg Transit. Right now, it is used primarily by students, but we would love to see more of the community be able to use that. And when we're thinking about traffic, we really need to think about bicyclists and pedestrians, and how can we incorporate that into our overall plan and making sure that there are multiple ways for people to travel. So, thank you.
I believe the BT is an excellent opportunity to help alleviate some of this problem. Right now, it's a spoke system that basically serves to and from campus for students. So when you have a dense community like the retreat that goes in out there, the students are going to take the bus to and from campus, but they're not necessarily going to take it when they need to go anywhere else. So if we could perhaps look at adding some routes, perhaps some circular routes, that would help encourage people to use public transit more, I think would be of great benefit. I would also like to see, as the university is growing, I would like to see more of the density in the downtown area because the people that live downtown, they tend to walk more, bike more, and use public transit more. I think that perhaps the Prices Fork extension has got some potential to divert some traffic around Main Street, but there's certainly some properties that are going to have to be acquired and gone through there, and it's going to be a careful examination. Prices Fork needs attention. Church Street could be extended to the middle school property.
I think that it's important to carefully consider infrastructure improvements, including roadways and parking, and I also think it's time to explore expanding BT bus routes. The cities of Clemson and Chapel Hill have successfully moved to a fare-free system to encourage transportation, everybody using the bus system. I think it's time for us to explore some of those opportunities. And as a person who does commute by bicycle to work frequently, I think we need to make bicycle infrastructure a priority. I think it's time to stop treating bicyclists as a second-class user of the public right-of-way. I think they need to be treated on the same level as walkers and drivers.
Thank you. Yes, rebuttal?
Okay. I just wanted to add that it's important to note that we will have a Southgate interchange coming up that will also alleviate the traffic for people who are going to be coming to Virginia Tech and commuting. They'll be able to get back onto the Southgate interchange and hopefully get back home quicker. We also have the Westward Expansion Road that's coming through the golf course at Virginia Tech, and hopefully that'll link into the roundabout that's going to the Southgate Interchange. But the main point is that we need to start building density development in places where people can walk and bike and have more connectors, and we do have a bicycle master plan as well coming up.
Any other rebuttal?
I would just like to say quickly, we really do have a bicycle master plan already done. It was the 2015 master plan, and we still have to keep working on implementing those things. And I asked our town manager to have a work session update on that, and that will happen in November, towards the end of November.
Thank you.
Any other rebuttal? Okay. Our next question, along the same lines, where do you stand on adding more cycling, walking paths, and connecting existing paths, and what would you do to encourage cyclists to use them instead of roads and silent -- I mean, sidewalks that aren't silent, sidewalks where applicable? And we will begin with Susan Mattingly.
I mentioned that in my previous answer. I think that we have missed several opportunities to improve bicycle infrastructure in the College Avenue, Promenade, and in the North Main Street improvements. I think it's a change of mindset. I think we need to make bicycle infrastructure a priority. It's not just for recreation, it's also for commuting. We have been promised a Huckleberry Extension for a number of years, and it always seems to fall down on the list of priorities. I understand there are some budgetary restrictions to that, but if we value it, we will find the money to pay for it, and I'd like to see us make it a priority.
Thank you. Karen?
I think there's several areas of the Huckleberry that could be targeted to be finished, the one going down to hook up with the Gateway Trail from Prices Fork is the one that's been kind of a sticking point for several people. There's a few years ago, I live up on Maywood Street, and they added some extensions up there, but then they brought it right up to the church at Maywood, and they stopped, and it's just got just a little bit further to get up to Blacksburg New School. And I believe some of those folks would appreciate that, but I believe it does need to be a priority. I believe the alleyway behind the Blacksburg Baptist Church could perhaps be some sort of bikeway. There's a lot of different, you know, opportunities. There's probably more than we can afford, but I think we need to start pecking away at them, look at some funding from wherever we can, from donations to grants, and just make it needs to be a real priority.
Thank you. Lauren?
In an ideal world, many years down the road, I'd love to see it, well, maybe not many years, I'd love to see us have a city bike type program where in other cities where you can rent a bicycle for an hour or a day, and then you return it to different locations. That would really encourage bicycle use throughout the town. In the 2015 Bicycle Master Plan, there's some fantastic ideas, and I think it is so well thought out and so thorough, I'd really love to see that implemented. There's a lot of alternate routes that they list in that plan. It's available online if you're ever interested in looking at it. It requires more signage and more publicity about what the routes are. There's a fantastic bike lane on Draper Road where you can go either direction against traffic or with traffic. So I think we have the thought process in place, we just really need to implement it.
Susan?
Thanks. A rent-a-bike program is actually being sought through and is underway for Montgomery County, Virginia Tech, and the town working collaboratively, so you're spot on on that. Again, we should implement what was recommended to us in the 2015 Bicycle Master Plan. Our Corridor Committee annually updates the priority list for trails and sidewalks that are infill. We've managed to take our North Main Street corridor bike trail all the way up past Woodbine, past Wyatt Farm, up to that church, so we've almost got it out to the Blacksburg New School. We're getting there. Again, the Huckleberry Trail is almost finished. I think we are going to have to bite the bullet and stop waiting for grant money and just fund that last connector to the National Forest.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, it didn't take us until we moved to Richmond 12 years ago to see that biking is very much part of the fabric of this community. It's not only Susan mentioned, riding to work, it's not only that, of course, it's individuals and families riding for recreation. Keeps us alert when we're driving, crosswalks, people walking, people biking. I think anytime we have the opportunity to include biking and other forms of recreation like that in our planning and our transportation planning, we need to do that. There are grants and other sources out there that will complement our funding, not part of this discussion probably, but when we lived in Richmond, part of the biking scene there was the annual, it was a huge competition, the Tour to Richmond, and other competitions that I think would fit very well here as part of our bicycling culture.
Bethany?
Yeah, thank you. I want to start out by saying thanks to all the people who made complimentary remarks about the 2015 Bicycle Plan. I worked for several years with the Corridor Committee in order to produce that document, and there's a great deal more work that goes into it than just drawing, you know, colorful lines, a load of work. And this gets to something that Ed was remarking on. Bicycle culture can be cultivated in this town. We have a really strong beginning. The many hours, hundreds of hours, that volunteers from the community have given to producing that bicycle plan, it's just really extraordinary, and I think we can build on that strength. I've been to San Francisco many times in the last year or so, and when you approach a crosswalk in this major American city, it's like a superpower. Five lanes of traffic will come to a screeching halt. So if they can accomplish that in a giant city, we can cultivate a bicycle culture here in Blacksburg that will welcome and encourage people to be on bicycles. That's in addition to the infrastructure.
Kusia?
Thank you. Yes, our bicycle plan, which has been mentioned many times now already, is a wonderful document. It's got a lot of public input in it, and really, we do have a bicycle culture already. We have a very involved NRV Bike Club who has come to us as experts in this area, and they've made a concerted effort in letting us know how we can continue the bike culture here and the kind of connectors that we need to implement in our infrastructure plans to make sure that, you know, bikes are a part of our regular transportation program. We do have a bike share program, as Susan mentioned, that we need to implement, and really, this is so important, not only because does it alleviate traffic, but also it's important for our health, safety, and welfare, which is our top-of-mind issue here on Town Council. It's good for your health, and it's important to make sure that we have those connectors. We do plan on doing the Huckleberry Trail connection. We did have the money for it in our general fund. We ended up not getting state money for it, so we will make that connection. It'll be beautiful.
Thank you. Abada? Okay. We'll move to our next question, which has to do with quality of life, and the question is, what specific policies would you advocate for to maintain equality of neighborhoods? And we will begin our question with Leslie.
Great, thank you. Quality of life in this town is really the hallmark of my campaign, very, very important to me. And I have several ideas for neighborhoods that would not increase bureaucracy but would increase intimacy. One of them would be slow rides. This is a practice that's done in Detroit, and it would have people on bicycles, your elected officials, members of Town Council, the mayor, and members of neighborhoods ride slowly through the streets together to actually monitor what's taking place there. There are 26 neighborhoods in the town of Blacksburg. That would be just the right number to come to the podium one time in a year at least, and so that representatives of neighborhoods and members of neighborhoods could come and speak with us directly and highlight the problems or the celebrations that they have in their neighborhoods. I think technology can actually put us more in touch with each other, too. There are lots of alternatives to WTOB and -- yeah, okay, thank you. I have several more.
As my campaign has advanced, most of that has been a door-to-door campaign. At this point, I'm somewhere around 3,700, 3,800 homes, doors knocked on at least in neighborhoods, and part of the quality of life, much of the quality of life revolves around students in neighborhoods, especially close in, closer to the university, the more that becomes an issue. I haven't heard anybody yet say, "We shouldn't have students in our neighborhoods." Number one, can we have code enforcement? Can we enforce what's on the books? And that's difficult and often is through calling the police, but can we have enforcement of our neighborhoods? And folks have offered suggestions on how we might change that policy to make it more livable. I understand one of our fellow ACC universities has a policy Clemson, and if you misbehave in town, you have consequences at the university, and maybe that's a path we might investigate, too.
Thank you. Susan?
Hi. I think one thing that we really have to watch out for in our neighborhoods besides code enforcement, and we are getting better at that, is making our neighborhoods affordable. We have to make sure that we have all kinds of housing options in our neighborhoods, housing for seniors and retirees, for young professionals, for our workforce, for our students. And we have to have good, sound ordinances to help protect our neighborhoods from encroachment by development. Again, if we have a development occurring near a neighborhood, we have to make sure that we buffer it adequately, that the noise or the light overflow from a development, which might be critical to Blacksburg, does not impede upon our neighborhoods. We don't want to have flight from Blacksburg. We would like to have our people live in Blacksburg who want to work in Blacksburg. So we have to really watch out for things like Airbnb and accessory apartments. They, again, can help people afford to live in Blacksburg, but we have to make sure that they don't cause problems in the neighborhoods.
Well, I think from every stage of life, I have four school-aged children, and so I'm very concerned about making sure we have wonderful activities for our young families here in Blacksburg. We need to support in-home daycare centers so that we can help solve our problem of being a daycare desert for working families that need childcare. We also need to think about seniors that want to age in place and having senior 55-plus housing where folks want to come and retire here and stay here. So for every stage of life, we really want to think about how we can make Blacksburg an inclusive and wonderful place for us all to be.
Quality life is one of the things that's also important to me in this campaign, which trickles down to the neighborhoods, obviously. Enforcement, the occupancy is a difficult thing to enforce by the town. It may require some citizens standing up and pointing out where there are issues where it's hard for the town to police that. If you have somebody that's renting a house to five people, it's only zoned for three, they're driving up the cost of real estate in your neighborhood, and affordable housing is an issue in this town. So you have areas like McBride Village that are turning into majority student housing. Community Housing Partners, Habitat for Humanity have done some excellent projects around town where they're putting some homeownership back into some key areas like Bennett Hill, and, you know, hopefully, little projects like that, we can work on turning things around, but it's just, I think it's just a lot of the little things.
I think we need to be, again, proactive in code enforcement. I think when you can see six cars parked on the lawn, it's kind of a clue that it may be an overoccupied house. I think we could be more proactive finding those places. I think we need to develop relationships with the neighborhoods. I think we need to invest in workforce housing so our teachers and young faculty members can actually afford to live in our community, as well as investing in senior housing and creating zoning incentives that make that possible.
Kusia?
I'm a native of Blacksburg. I was born here and I grew up here, and I understand the community here because I've lived in five different neighborhoods in this town throughout my life, representing different phases of my life. I think I'm the only mayor or candidate up here who's actually lived with roommates in Blacksburg and rented as a single person and lived in an apartment and then a condo and then worked my way up to a house. So I recognize that each neighborhood has their own unique issues to deal with, and a solution to address all of that is through my neighborhood liaison program, and basically that's modeled after the Commercial Center Liaison Program that we have here in town, where council members are assigned and work with different neighborhoods in this community to tackle issues such as their overoccupancy, parking on the lawn, noise, and therefore will have a really good communication with the neighborhoods as well as a personal experience. The neighbors will feel more connected to the town when they have a liaison and know that they can go to them for problems and issues, but also, the council will have an opportunity to learn more about the neighborhoods outside of their own.
Rebuttal?
I'd like to add that the tech, the university, and the town are actually working better on student issues in neighborhoods. It used to be, a few years ago, we did not work very well together, but actually, under certain situations, tech will actually send a letter home to the parents, and so in some ways, those kind of issues are being nipped in the bud.
Karen?
Susan used a phrase I agree with, that we need to develop relationships with all of our neighborhoods. The one thing that has come through loud and clear to me in this door-to-door campaigning is getting our council members more engaged with our neighborhoods. And I think if we're doing that, if we're proactively seeking to do that, attending HOA meetings, when are you meeting? Could we have a town hall? Could you host us in our home? Could I bring the police chief? Could I bring the vice mayor? Those sorts of things, and see what's going on, learn what's going on. That's a good way, I think, to understand what is happening out there.
I meet on a regular basis with Virginia Tech administrators, and a concept that has come up in those meetings is the idea of an academic village. So perhaps in a place like Bennett Hill Progress or McBride Village, we could have market-priced housing, and it would serve as a kind of node where young families, new professors, could be very close to campus and work swiftly back and forth between campus and their homes.
Any others?
I just wanted to say one thing. The whole point of the neighborhood liaison program is to sort of solidify the relationship between Town Council and the neighborhoods, and it does get us into those homes, into those neighborhoods, understanding what those issues are. It is kind of an extension of what we used to have, if you recall, the Neighborhood Federation Program here that worked really well, but then fizzled out, so I want to revitalize that in a new way and have that one-on-one
So I want to revitalize that in a new way and have that one-on-one connection with the neighborhoods, so we can tackle the issues that you personally feel are necessary.
Move on. Our next question has to do with businesses and some business growth. So without referencing, I feel like I'm yelling, sorry, without referencing what has already been done, what new things will you do to bring new businesses downtown to fill storefronts? And we will start this line of questioning with Ken.
One of the key things of my campaign is downtown Blacksburg. I'm passionate about downtown. I'd like to see more people living and working in downtown. It's going to help out the local businesses, it's going to help out the vacant storefronts, it's going to help out our tax base. It's, and those people are going to be less likely to be in cars and using alternative means of transportation. So I think, you know, as the university is growing, we need to try to place our housing where we want people spending their dollars. That's...
Susan?
As President of DBI, we've been having lots of conversations about how to encourage new businesses to come to Blacksburg. We need to give them the tools they need to succeed. That may be streamlining the permitting process, providing parking where it's lacking, and investing in broadband infrastructure. Some years ago, we were considered the most wired town in America. That is no longer the case. Galax is more wired than Blacksburg, Virginia. We need to give them the tools to succeed. If we want to recruit entrepreneurs of the next generation, this is the kind of investments they're going to be looking for.
Christian?
The way businesses are attracted to come to downtown and stay in business are twofold. Number one, they require foot traffic. Number two, they require affordable rents. So in terms of the foot traffic, the main thing is that we just need to get people living downtown. And that's, the way we do that is through denser infill development and make sure that the business, the builders actually have an opportunity to do more dense development downtown, like we did, trading historic properties or maintaining historic properties for more density, maybe doing some green building for more density, or maybe affordable housing for more density. So we really have to look at our zoning code for that. In terms of affordable rents, we can incentivize property owners to fix up buildings because right now, the way it is, is that no mom-and-pop store can afford to live, or to afford the rent and also bring up the building to code. So really, we need to level the playing field, so it's not just chain restaurants and chain retail that actually can afford to be downtown. We also should look at our zoning code and maybe perhaps look at office on the ground floor, and, oh, that's it, that's time.
Thank you. I was Director of the Downtown Merchants of Blacksburg 10 years ago, and so I have been working ever since then on this particular problem, and it's easy, it's not easy to unpack. Our residents don't necessarily want to see more chains, although certainly, we support them, and they do a lot of good in rehabbing buildings. But what we're asked for constantly is boutique businesses. And that's what we're asked for by residents who are already here, and also by the recruits that are coming through Virginia Tech's doors. There's a problem that Bill Ellenbogen described to me years ago, and that is, our whole county is smaller than a small city. We don't make the rankings for any of the larger chains. So there's a couple of reasons why we should be looking at small boutique businesses. The town of Blacksburg does, has had a facade grant program. We have, we waive fees, we expedite permits, and so there are supports already in place for our merchant community. Could we do more? Probably.
Thank you. I think the 2015 downtown housing study is a good place to start, at least a place for some ideas. So I recall that one of the summary points was that the properties at the old middle school and the Blacksburg Baptist Church developed, done in a way that's pleasing to us, done right, would be good catalysts for our downtown. And perhaps then, as we're seeing people living downtown, perhaps working more downtown, would begin, the market would begin to take over and fill some of those spots downtown. The report also suggested that the town and the university should be master planning together where possible. And one of the suggested areas was our downtown, suggesting public and institutional partnerships that would be mutually beneficial for both parties, and again, including downtown.
Susan Anderson?
Well, our Town Manager is on the Planning Committee of Virginia Tech that's working on that creative district, which is right abutting Draper Road. And so, again, we are doing some work with studying for future development, mostly on tech campus. But again, it certainly bleeds into our downtown. The housing study that we did a few years ago is absolutely correct in what we all were probably thinking. There is space downtown, there is demand downtown for housing other than student housing. And so I believe, just like Ken was saying earlier, the more people we can get downtown, the more ready people we have to go downtown to eat, to walk into a retail establishment, to go to the pharmacy, that we have a wonderful pharmacy downtown. And so, again, the more people that we can house downtown, the more that that will support our retail community. And one thing I would like to encourage is the experiential retail. You can't get an experience buying retail online.
As a business owner and a serial entrepreneur, this very much speaks to my heart. I went to James Madison University for college, and in Harrisonburg 20 years ago, that downtown was desolate. Everything was empty, it was not a pleasant place to be. Now, it is a thriving downtown community. And what they've done is they've used a program called the Main Street Approach. And that has four aspects: economic incentives to recruit entrepreneurs, design, where they want it to be inviting and welcoming, which we've really done already, promotion, which are festivals and community building, which I think we can build on what we already have, and organization, which are relationships, partnerships, merchant groups. We already have the Blacksburg Partnership. We're working towards many of these goals that the Main Street Approach offers. So I think we can work on what we have and add these other aspects to really recruit entrepreneurs that we want to fill those spots downtown.
Is that all good? Rubabel?
I just wanted to finish my thought. Currently, we do not have, we do not allow office space on the ground floor in downtown. And what my thought was, is that maybe we should have, take another look at that, and maybe look at it block by block, so that we only allow a few offices on every block so that at 6 o'clock, when the offices close down, it's not a dark block. We could also consider revolving loan fund, too, and this is something that, actually, I learned about just today regarding JMU. And this loan fund has, helps to bring diverse local businesses so they can find a space downtown and actually afford to be downtown. So there are lots of different things that we can do when we look at our zoning code, but to answer the question, these are some of the ideas that we need to implement and be more creative to get more people downtown and therefore, more businesses.
Thank you. Other rebuttal?
Yeah, I would just say briefly that while it's true that our code reads that we discourage offices on the ground floor, that's considered a best practice nationally. We adopted that some years ago, and the changing retail scene makes it look like we might modify that. But in point of practice, each time we've been asked for a variance on that, we have granted it. So most of the offices that have come forward, they're happily now, and I think the system is working as it should.
I do have a rebuttal. With regards to the Main Street Program, DBI sort of substitutes as a Main Street Program. We actually have a functioning Main Street Program, it's just not an official Main Street Program. It uses all the four pillars. So we sort of have that covered. It's a great, great model, and we already are doing that.
Could I just make a clarification on a rebuttal? I want to make sure that people do know that office on the first floor is allowed by conditional use permit, and we have not denied a conditional use permit since I've been on council.
That's true, we have not denied the conditional use permit, but we also have to think about the fact that because we do require a conditional use permit, we don't know the opportunity cost of some of the businesses that might not have come to ask for one because of the process. So that's just another thing to keep in mind.
Thank you. So our next question, we're going to transition to a question related to Blacksburg and the county. And so the question is kind of twofold. And it reads, "Blacksburg and Montgomery County policies often seem strained. How can the town and county work more effectively together?" And we will begin this question with Ed.
Thank you. In my time here, 12 years, I think the relationship between the county and the town began to deteriorate over the middle school property and hit rock bottom with the high school My work requires that I maintain effective working relationships with political and administrative leadership in all NRV local governments, and I see most of them on a regular basis. I believe I have a basis, knowing Montgomery County leadership, but also Christiansburg, Giles County. We're going to disagree at times with any neighbor, but we need to learn not to be so disagreeable. Because of my good working relationships there, I think I have a basis to lead us out of that. I haven't been in the thick of it like our Town Council over the last few years.
Thank you. Susan Anderson?
Well, we have a real mixed relationship with the county. On the plus side, our 9/11 call center is working well, our police departments and sheriff's office work well together, our fire stations, our rescue squads, all this is wonderful. We have a monthly meeting of our mayor and our vice mayor and some board of supervisors and tech officials to talk about common issues, regional issues. So again, those are wonderful things. The Nellie's Cave Park just was expanded. We had a beautiful ceremony in August, getting nine acres next to our current Nellie's Cave Park. It's, that's the pasture. You all, please go out and use it if you haven't. Where we stick are school properties. And so I am hopeful that there is this possibility that seems to have occurred, that we may be able to get the old high school property, and I am also very hopeful that, hopeful that the development project that's coming on the middle school will be successful.
Well, I'm coming from an outside perspective and not having the history of being on council, I feel like I could come at this with a clean slate. And I really want to just have open, transparent conversations with those on the Board of Supervisors, whether individually or as a group, and encourage more dialogue between the two bodies. I really have high hopes that we can purchase the Blacksburg High School property, and I think that that might solve a lot of our current strained relationship. And whatever we can do to just keep that open dialogue with, and not make it feel like it's a zero-sum game, where we're always kind of seen as the little guy compared to the county or compared to tech. And if we can come towards a conversation where we all want everyone to win and we want a positive solution for all sides, I think that'll be a better conversation.
I think it's great, the relationship that's been developed between the police, the fire department, and rescue, between the county and the towns. However, the relationship with, in a lot of other areas, is just very poor. And I think that showed itself, obviously, to everybody during the Blacksburg High School property transaction. And I'm not going to sit up here and say it's the county's fault, it's the town's fault or anybody's fault. I'm just saying it's a problem, and we just need to have a reset, and it just needs to change. And so perhaps we just need to sit down with a, and have a conversation and meet with, you know, the council needs to meet with the Board of Supervisors and just sit down and say, "How can we work together? What are, what are the things that are causing these tensions?" And hopefully, you know, me as a fresh person on council, we'll be able to come to that with a fresh perspective.
I think it's important to remember that it's not a them and us. Blacksburg residents are members of, are residents of Montgomery County. And when the citizens of Blacksburg/McGumry County feel strongly about an issue, they need to communicate with their supervisors, and the supervisors need to act in the best interest of the entire community. I'm not sure that that's always happened. I think it's important for us to have an open dialogue and, whenever possible, have opportunities to meet face-to-face and not rely on cumbersome letters of intent. I'd like to see us have more conversations, either in the public hearing or in closed-door sessions. But I think a conversation, you can't make, nothing substitutes for a conversation between people who share the same interest, and that is the citizens.
Christian?
I agree with all my colleagues here, and I do want to remind everyone that the relationship with the county wasn't always acrimonious. I mean, growing up here with Chair Perkins and Chair Chief Brown, we did always have open dialogue, and it was, you know, a very good, inclusive communication. I think as mayor, I really believe that the mayor needs to make this a priority, the next mayor, and as mayor, I will definitely do so. I feel like I already have common ground. Personal relationships is a very important launching point to actually ameliorate that the relationship of the three females that are on the Board of Supervisors. One of them was my teacher. Two of them came to my Bartle shower, one came to my baby shower, and then Chair Tuck, of course, is from Blacksburg, and we both went to Blacksburg schools. So there's a common ground there. We have worked well in the county for many, in many different ways. Susan outlined a few. The other way is affordable housing. The Fieldstone Project was a good way of us collaborating together to actually give incentives to the builder to make sure that they were able to create affordable housing that will be available to those that qualify for it.
I agree with my colleagues who have described the five and six or seven different ways that we interact very, very well with the county. Largely, our problems, our sticking points have been to do with real estate, mostly where our professional services to residents are concerned, we do rather nicely. And, but here's the problem with putting all that on seven people. If baby showers and parties and teaching could put us all together, that would have happened by now. And so I want to suggest, in the gentlest way, that this is the responsibility of us all. The tensions between us and our neighbors in the county, they're generational, they have grown up among all of us. When you go to a restaurant in Christiansburg, how do you treat your waiter? That's something I'd like everybody to consider, because this isn't, this doesn't come down to just seven people on council.
Ed?
I'm sorry, give me a minute.
I did, didn't I? Good.
Well, I will say this. I do believe, at least on the town end, we both have things to work on, but I think a new leadership, at least in the mayor's spot on our end, would be effective. I know the leadership in Montgomery, I also know leadership in Christiansburg, in Giles, and Pulaski, and all around the NRV. I have a basis for leading us in this, and I think that will go a long way in helping us handle it, at least from this end.
Okay. Christian?
Yes, and I do want to say that, you know, this is true, that this is a community-wide important project that we all need to sort of focus on and make sure that we address. However, it has to come from the top. I mean, us, the seven of us are charged by all of you to get along with our neighbors. And if we can't get along with our neighbors, then how are we going to get along with the region? How are we going to, you know, show ourselves as a place that we want to live in to the nation? I mean, this is our responsibility, and I don't mean to reduce it by saying that, you know, we, I have personal relationships, but that's where you start in a small town. We have to be able to find things in common and launch from there.
Any other rebuttal? All right. Our next question has to do with environmental sustainability. What specifically in addition will you do to make existing green space more secure and Blacksburg more environmentally friendly? For example, green building codes, solar in residential areas, electric vehicles. And we will start the questioning with Lauren.
I love this question. I've, in my campaign, I've walked about 75% of Blacksburg so far, and in every community, I have seen solar panels on houses. I saw my first electric car hookup at a house last week, which was absolutely phenomenal. I would love to see us support Solarize Blacksburg, have that come back, and other ways that we can support electric vehicles. But I also want to talk about the chemicals that we put into our environment. There was an issue with the renovation of the municipal golf course over the summer that the contractor that was used, used Roundup on large sections of the property. And that was, it was a really big concern for the residents, and I went to that open meeting afterwards, and they were very, very upset and very concerned. You know, just in March of this year, this whole state of California banned Roundup, use of Roundup in the entire state, and here... And here, we have an opportunity to really think about the chemicals that we put into our environment and that we use on our municipal lands, and keeping as many of our citizens safe from those chemicals as possible.
I think that perhaps we could offer density bonuses to people that have good green practices and solar, alternative energy objectives. We need to do anything we can to, you know, support technology as it's emerging. Hopefully, electric cars will become more prevalent, different forms of more fuel-efficient vehicles. I think we've done a great job with having single-stream recycling in our apartment complexes around town. That's had to have made a huge difference. But I think we could probably do something to help out the businesses with recycling as well. The town has been going around inspecting retaining ponds around town and having people make repairs on these 20, 30-year-old retaining ponds and making sure they're up to code and doing their job. So we're working well with stormwater management there. I guess it's my turn.
Okay. I agree with Ken. We need to look at incentivizing LEED-certified projects, density bonuses, or X-valued plan review. I think we can also look at switching the town fleet, including Blacksburg Transit Vehicles and other town vehicles, to electric vehicles. Our town is not that big. We don't need a lot of range. I mean, the limiting factor with electric vehicles is the limited range, but we are not that big of a town. So we can look to investing in electric -- an electric fleet. General Motors is already talking about transitioning away from the internal combustion engine in the next, you know, 10 or 28, 10 or 15 years. I think we can invest in solar arrays to power town buildings. But I also think we can look at lobbying Richmond to institute renewable portfolio standards that would encourage power companies to make investments in renewable energy so we can begin to move -- and I'm over.
Chrisa?
I think Blacksburg does a fantastic job in thinking about sustainability in every aspect of our policies. We actually have a dedicated sustainability director in our town, Carol Davis, who always is thinking about sustainability, not only environmental sustainability, but social sustainability and in many aspects of our policies. We do have a wonderful recycle -- apartment recycling program that was initiated by the apartment council and other groups here in town. We can translate that to the downtown merchants eventually, and also maybe add composting. We do do updates for our corrals, and that might be a place where we can actually make room for composting in the future. I do believe that we can do density trades for LEED-certified building. And also, just think about how we move forward with all of our sustainable actions. And we have great people on council, and I would want to empower them, those that know more about sustainability and environmentally friendly practices moving forward.
Thank you.
This is a -- this is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. I was a co-founder of Sustainable Blacksburg. I have been endorsed in this campaign season by the Greens at Virginia Tech. And I launched the 16 Frogs Watershed Initiative, a public arts project with an environmental consciousness. And that is designed to bring awareness of Strubel's Creek to people generally. It was placed on our state's impaired waterways list in the year of our bicentennial, and it's been on the top of that list ever since. It is true that we have all kinds of policies in place, but I think it's fair to say that this is a place that we have fallen short a bit. We have a sustainability director, but if we don't bother to consult her on things like the golf course, we're going to fall flat, and we did. And so we can make improvements, and I believe that we will. The recycling with downtown merchants was actually something that was launched by our facilities manager. He received a major grant, and recycling of electronics began with our downtown merchants when I was director.
I think sustainability will always be part of the fabric of this town. A university town, and it's very key to what goes on here. I like the way the town addresses sustainability broadly, too. I can't add anything to what's been said here about environmental sustainability, but what I do like also is that the town, in talking about sustainability, also talks about economic -- it was alluded to economic stability or sustainability, having ample revenue streams to fund town operations. We talked about environmental sustainability, but there's also social sustainability, the equality and inclusiveness of everybody in this town. And while we -- the question was around environmental sustainability, I think the way we define it as a town broadly is key, too.
We do have a sustainability manager, and she is working nonstop. One thing that she's working on is art on storm drains so that it calls more attention to our storm drains, so people will see where our water's going and hopefully take better care of our water and our stormwater. We did pass the apartment recycling ordinance in January. Carol's been working with the apartment complexes for months, and all the rules and regulations will be fully implemented by the apartment complexes in December, so that will greatly enhance our recycling. She's working on green business program, which would be for purchasing and operations. And we were the first town in the state, first municipality, to do solarize Blacksburg, solarize whatever their town is. Now there are 43 solarization projects in Virginia, but again, we were the first. My husband and I put 12 panels on our garage, and we had one bill that was one penny. It wasn't even worth writing a check. He walked that penny over to the electric service station and got a receipt, which cost more than the penny. Living green, the kids want to live green in Blacksburg.
Rebuttal? Can you rebuttal?
I just wanted to add to the solar sustainability, that there are many people that came on board after that program was installed here, and that was really cool, actually, to go around town and see everyone who implemented those solar panels. And although those grants were only for a year, we can think about, as a town, how we can continue to incentivize solarizing those houses. Maybe it's something like waiving the hookup fee that they have, or giving some kind of credit back. But we should really consider, you know, doing that. Also, another way to look at environmental sustainability is to also put our broadband in place, because when you have broadband connectivity, you don't have to get in your cars and go to work. You can sometimes just work from home and maybe even create your own business. So those kind of opportunities do alleviate a lot of the environmental factors. I'm sorry.
Is there other rebuttal?
I'd like to just mention that our Parks and Recreation Committee is going to have an agenda item, being the golf course, and look at our golf course policies and procedures. And one of our town council members in the audience tonight is on that committee, so you might want to talk to John Bush at the end of the meeting.
Our next question is about accessibility for people with disabilities. And the question is, how will you make the downtown become more accessible for the disabled? Over the last few years, handicap parking spaces have been lost. So how will we make getting to downtown more accessible? And we will start this question with Susan Anderson.
Well, I could be misinformed, but I think that we have increased our handicap parking downtown. While College -- the College Avenue promenade was being done, we did lose handicap parking spaces, but we have more on College Avenue now and more on that Traver/Ronoc area. And so I could be misinformed, but I think we have actually improved that a little bit. But we definitely need more. Our downtown was built over hundreds of years, and it was not built with walkers in mind or wheelchairs. And so again, I think we can do much more to make our downtown more accessible.
Lauren?
That's an excellent question and something I think we all need to give a lot more thought We need to think about every place where we have -- that we can make sure we have ramps instead of high steps or curbs, rather, and make sure that there are opportunities for people to pull off on the side of the road or to allow other people to get out, so that they're closer to, say, the Lyric or other restaurants. And how we could encourage folks to -- I don't really have a good answer for this. I'm sorry, I haven't really thought a lot about this, but I would love to think about it more, and welcome any input you all have.
I would say that I really haven't given a lot of thought to this myself either, but if there's a -- certainly if there's a need for more handicap parking in downtown, I think we need to provide it. The BT access is an excellent resource to the handicap -- to handicap people here in our community. And perhaps we could look at also expanding the access, BT access service to wider hours and/or, you know, wider footprint.
Well, this is something the Lyric thinks about quite a bit, because we have a lot of patrons who have some mobility issues. When they did the College Avenue promenade, I think Susan is absolutely correct, there was a big decrease in the number of handicap parking places, but we lobbied -- the Lyric lobbied very strong, and we now have four handicap places, like within half a block of the Lyric Theater. But I think we also need to look at sidewalk repair. There are places where the sidewalk is heaved and difficult and is a tripping hazard, and I think that's something that, you know, we can look into repairing as well.
Chrisa?
We need to make sure that our downtown and all of our commercial centers, for that matter, are accessible to everyone. We are an inclusive town, and that means inclusivity and accessibility. Many of us can find ourselves having mobility issues at any time. It's not only just for the permanently handicapped, but some of us, you know, that either trip and fall or have some kind of accident, and we just don't -- we're not able to travel in the way that we normally do. So this is very important. I believe that we should have more transportation options through the BT, as was mentioned before, in order to get people from point A to point B in a very streamlined way. Pull-off areas are also important, not only for the handicap, but also for, you know, the new transportation model that early adopters are using through Lyft and Uber. And so it can be dual. It can actually solve two problems at one time. So I think it's a very important issue, and it really speaks to our inclusivity moving forward.
Yeah. There is a fundamental tension between the character of our town, which is very classic three-story red brick 1890s downtown, and these accessibility issues. I saw a very creative kind of solution when I visited in Santa Fe, and that is that they will take a heavy canvas bag, padlock it to a meter, and they can instantly convert a regular parking meter to a handicap meter. I think that's really inventive, and I think it's worth -- it's a low-cost, sensible solution, and I'm all for that. When we did have difficulties and there weren't enough handicap spaces, we did invent more. But also, promotion of the Church Street lot, a lot of people just simply don't know about it, but we have been promoting that. It's very close, there are cuts in the pavement, and it's a good solution for people who do have mobility problems. Yeah, so.
I think a good place to start in how we might view this is how many of our businesses go at it. I can tell you, in our business, all of our locations around the NRV, we are very quick to adapt accessibility recommendations. This plays into, I think, what I mentioned earlier, is the broad, the broad approach to sustainability the town has. And as sensitive as Blacksburg is to these kind of issues, I would think it would address this pretty quickly. I'm not -- I'm like Ken and others, I'm not as informed on this as I might be, but I would think Blacksburg would address this pretty quickly.
Can I do a rebuttal?
Yes, you may.
I'd just like to add that the town does spend funds annually on sidewalk repair. And so if you see a problem like Susan mentioned, please do just get to your computer or your phone and go to the town website and punch in at your request, and let us know about that issue, because we sure would like to fix it. We have a wonderful public works department that can do those small things relatively speedily. So again, at your request for not only accessibility issues, but whatever might be wrong in your area.
Other rebuttal?
And just to piggyback off what Susan said, it is important to note that every time we do have a new development, we do require sidewalks. We actually suggest that very strongly. And there was a suggestion made to us, actually just last night, or on Tuesday night when we had our council meeting, about whether, if there isn't that trigger to make the developer do the sidewalk, perhaps think about putting some money into a sidewalk fund, so later on, the town could then pair with that fund and finish the connector that way.
Our next question is a town and gown question, and it reads, "For many years, the town has been at odds with Virginia Tech regarding the meals tax issue, freshmen bringing cars, creating shopping, and driving meccas on campus, and many other issues which adversely affect our local small businesses. What will you do to improve the town and gown working relationship to benefit our town?" And we will begin with Susan Mattingly.
As the president of Downtown Merchants, or Downtown Blacksburg Incorporated, I guess we're called now, we've had to work with the university on various policies they've drafted and put in place that adversely affected the business climate downtown. We've worked with town officials to come up with strategies to alleviate those. Orientation changes drew business away from downtown. In 2016, we worked with them to find ways to encourage the students and their parents to come back into town. We give tours to those families. That was one of the ways we worked with the town to improve that relationship. The town also helped us work with campus with regards to their food truck situation. They were going to park them in close proximity to town, which of course could adversely affect our small restaurants, and the town was very helpful in helping us work with them. We are in this together. We have to be in regular dialogue with them so they can understand when policies they create adversely affect the community.
Chrisa?
We have a symbiotic relationship with Virginia Tech. We can't work apart, we have to work in tandem to move forward, otherwise, one of us will not get our optimal goals accomplished. I've been making a concerted effort to meet with tech administration outside of just the regular meetings that I had when I was vice mayor. I've actually sat in the office of the provost, of the dean of students here at Virginia Tech, as well as the dean of the graduate school, to talk to them about these issues that are important to us, like traffic, affordable housing, things to do in this community, and Virginia Tech growth. I think the key aspect is that we need to have more dialogue, and we need to have personal dialogue, and make sure that we have a seat at the table. In terms of the meals tax, we did tackle that issue a while ago, actually, and we did arrive to a compromise where Virginia Tech would collect the tax from stadium sales, and that amounts to about $100,000. But really, if you think about all of the -- goodness, I'll tell you later.
I do think, while we have spent some time today talking about our relationship with the county, I really do think our relationship with Virginia Tech has primacy. There's new leadership there, from the president's office to the development office, a new master -- a new campus master plan. There's new faces and new ways of thinking, and I've seen this over the course of my several terms as vice mayor. So I can see the differences, even for people who formerly served under new leadership, I'm hearing new things from them. So this is the perfect moment to hit the reset button. In the last month alone, I've had conversations regarding passenger rail, recruitment of new retailers, broadband expansion, and traffic solutions on 460. So during my time on council, our town has received national recognition for the beauty, safety, and services of town. So I really feel that the new Blacks -- the new Virginia Tech leadership recognizes that we are more than an ornament at their gates, and a lot of potential there for a new understanding.
Thank you. Ed?
When we first arrived in Blacksburg and I was becoming active in different organizations for my work, the meals tax was an issue. At least it was brought up as an issue. It hasn't been an issue for several years. I think a more critical issue is, where is our relationship with Virginia Tech headed? I think it's critical. We have a good working relationship, we have regular contact. What's coming? What can we work on together? I mentioned earlier this notion of public institutional partnerships in working together. What kind of lead time can we have in what you're thinking? Here's what we're thinking. How can we work together on that? We have to remember, I think, that, too, that Blacksburg is not the only Virginia Tech community going forward. We know Roanoke is developing, National Capital Region, Danville, Petersburg, in advanced manufacturing, and a new CRC, so to speak, in Hampton Road. So it's critical for us to have a good, local working relationship.
Thank you. Susan?
Well, we have great relationships on lots of issues with Virginia Tech. 911, again, police and rescue squad, fire stations, all those things, we work seamlessly together, just like we do with the county. just like we do with the county. We have a town gown committee, we mentioned a little bit earlier, that meets, I believe, quarterly, and that committee is more of your regular community activists, staff from the student affairs, and what we've been told by our housing and community services staff is that our relationship with that office, the office of the vice president of student affairs in our town, is better than it's ever been. And so that's, that's really wonderful. Our monthly meeting with our mayor, our vice mayor, and the vice presidents of Tech, again, is regular, and they work on very big issues, not these little smaller community issues. So we have relationships that are great. The meals tax, Tech could collect it if it wanted to. It just doesn't want to. And I think that's just where we are, and we're probably done with that for a few years. The food trucks issue that Susan talked about is important and taken care of.
Well, I also think that we have a lot of initiatives that we work on with the university that are fantastic, like the summer arts program, fire and rescue on campus. But we do need to be a member of that dialogue in a very symbiotic way, that when Tech says we're going to increase our student population, well, what does that mean for the town? And are they going to be able to house all those students on campus, or where are they going to go? And not only where are they going to house them, but you're going to have all that many more cars on the road. So here we are talking about traffic and infrastructure again. So, you know, can we talk about freshmen not having cars on campus? And when freshmen don't have cars, then they're going to use the town and all the retail services that we have here more frequently. So I, I think there's, there's creative ways that we can look at this and have a much more open dialogue going forward.
I think this is an area that's a huge challenge. At JMU, they collect the meals tax, I believe, on campus, but we can't force Virginia Tech to do it. It's a, local law is not enforceable on state parks. So it's unfortunately a bit of a dead issue, even though we would like to obviously have the meals tax. In general, I wouldn't think that it's making a huge decision on where people eat. Virginia Tech runs itself like a New York corporation, and they're out to get every dollar. But we need to keep the dialogue going. I really have to applaud the effort that DBI has done in the last couple of years, identifying a problem with orientation and other areas and getting some results done about it. But we need to make sure that the university recognizes that when they're trying to sell themselves to students, they're also selling themselves to the Blacksburg, Montgomery County, and the New River Valley as a whole. And so, you know, as we, as we all succeed, it's good for everyone.
Rebuttal? I just wanted to finish my thought that the university does give us about a half a million dollars to our, to our general fund through services that they pay to offset what we provide to them for fire and rescue, for the Henderson Long concerts, other things that they use. And also the $3 million, let's not forget that they pay us for the BT, that they fund for the BT. So any type of tax that we ask them to collect will not offset what they already contribute to us through those other services. I think in terms of, there was part of that question that mentioned about how do we use our comparative advantage? Well, we really, our focus really should be, how do we get people off campus to eat at our local eateries? I would also... Leslie, answer.
Yeah, you and I may have the same thing in mind, but the notion that Virginia Tech gives us $3 million for the BT is a bit of a misnomer. BT is made to serve students, and it is paid for by student fees. They're not gifting us $3 million. We have a legal status as a governmental entity, and therefore, we have lent that status to Virginia Tech so they can operate a bus system for their students.
Precisely.
I'd like, we, the town, operate the bus system for the students. But I wanted to say one thing about the growing student population, that we have been working with the different apartment complexes, the current apartment complexes in town, and suggesting that they may want to redevelop part of their apartment complexes, so that we have the infrastructure already in place for students, sewer, water, et cetera. And so that might be a reasonable place to put, put more student and student housing.
I just want to make a point again, that we do operate the bus system for the students, of course, but think about how many locals use this bus system. I mean, this is something, this is a bus system and transportation that a lot of low-income families depend on to get from point A to point B. So it's really important that we also acknowledge the fact that we're getting money from Virginia Tech to also service our local population that needs that bus system, as we talk about transportation issues and environmental sustainability.
Thank you. Thank you all. That was our last question of the evening, and at this time, we will, I will give each mayoral, I like that word, mayoral candidate and town council candidate the opportunity for final comments. Each will have two minutes to do that, and we will begin with Ed.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting us tonight. This is one of a series of forums that we will enjoy during this campaign season. I would say tonight's been a very agreeable forum. If you've been to other ones, there has been more disagreement, more, more difference in approach. And in my closing remarks, I would go along with what my priorities here are in the voter guide and say that I think the choices for mayor are, the differences are clear, that do we want to, do we want to work proactively to reconnect with our neighborhoods, or do we want to stay disengaged? That came through loud and clear to me as I've been, the town council has pulled away from neighborhoods. Do we want to do the town's part to reengage with Montgomery County? Or do we want to continue as is? Do we want to work to reverse our business unfriendly reputation? It's real. I see it in my work every day. It's real. And it's not just around development. Do we want to bring a deeper financial perspective to the council, or continue in what I would call is a very homogeneous body? And that's based on voter research done by the Collegia Times. I would say that over the last few years, there's been much about process and sometimes little about results in issues around the Old Blacksburg Middle School, Old Blacksburg High School, the commercial, our commercial reputation and infrastructure planning. And so I said, as I said, the choice is clear, status quo, with sometimes a little difference in status quo. Chrisa and Leslie, based on the Collegia Times, have disagreed seven times in seven years. We consider a new face, consideration of new approaches, and the possibility of different outcomes. So I appreciate your consideration on November 7th. Thank you.
Leslie?
Thanks. I agree with Ed. There are some very distinct differences among these three candidates. I want to point out, first of all, that I am the only candidate here who both owns a business and I have a successful record of public service. I'd also like to point out another very obvious difference, which is that both of my opponents, and this doesn't make them bad people or even bad candidates, but both of my opponents live in planned communities with homeowners associations on the west side of the 460 bypass. It means they are not living the experience that the rest of us are, where lifestyle conflicts, code enforcement, and absentee landlords tear at the social fabric. I represent you, my neighbors, my friends, the people I go to church with, hikers and bikers, birders and bridge players, school teachers and store managers, engineers and musicians, the people I've raised my children with here in our Blacksburg home. The November 7th election is an opportunity for us to set the course for the next four years. I am the person who can do that because I have been at the table, on the clock, on record, helping to create the community we are so fortunate to live in. The best college town in the South, the best place to retire, the best place to raise children, the best outdoor town, that place that we have built in the shelter of each other. I am Leslie Hager-Smith, and I ask for your vote on November 7th.
Chrisa? I thought about how I would do this closing statement because I have addressed the issues of why Leslie and I have voted together in many different forums, and also the fact that I don't feel that moving forward, you need to have a business in order to understand where businesses come from. But rather than a traditional closing statement where I tell you what I've done for the last eight years, I wanted to take this opportunity to tell you about a question I asked myself and how I answered it. Why do I want to be mayor? Two years ago, my husband and I had a daughter, and she's the light of our lives. Every decision I faced since then, I've had to ask me questions. How does this affect her? How does this decision make her life better? How does it make the town better? How does it make our neighborhoods better? Last year was particularly divisive for our country, a large part due to our presidential election. We don't yet face that level of division in Blacksburg, but it's getting harder to come together, even at our local level. Somehow, we've gotten to the point, for example, where we can't even sit down in the same room with our town and county representatives and hash out a reasonable plan for school properties. We have to resort to writing formal letters back and forth. So why run for mayor? The answer is, I know I can help bring people together. The development community and the neighborhood community, small business owners and property owners, historic preservationists and modern designers, Virginia Tech administration with more of the town staff, families looking for affordable housing and home builders. I've been connecting people my whole life. You see me all around town, making a personal effort to extract ideas from you, the experts we have all around us. I want to empower you to help lead us to solutions. And mostly, I want my daughter to grow up in a special place, my hometown where I grew up, in the country that opened its arms to my immigrant parents to achieve their American dream and encourage me to make a difference in my community. We all are responsible for making Blacksburg and our region the best it can be. And as mayor, I will work hard to create an environment where you can be your best. I want to do that for you, for our community, for your family, and for mine. We are all in this together. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you. Susan Anderson?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for organizing this forum tonight, and thank you here this evening who are participating. I'm Susan Anderson, and I'm running for reelection to Blacksburg Town Council on a platform of shared community values: smart growth, environmental preservation, a high quality of life for a diverse population, openness in government, active citizen participation in civic affairs. Throughout my many years in Blacksburg, I've been engaged in a rich variety of grassroots and civic activism, ranging from the New River Free Press to president of the Board of Directors of the Women's Resource Center of the New River Valley, to over a decade of service at VT's faculty senate, and over two decades advising VT student groups, including the United Feminist Movement. I've developed a deep understanding of the values and concerns of the citizenry of Blacksburg. I was elected to town council in 2006 and reelected in 2009 and 2013. I've served two terms as vice mayor. I'm running on my record of service and accomplishments since taking office. I've gained valuable leadership, leadership experience on town council, and the Blacksburg Housing Advisory Board, Blacksburg Partnership Board of Directors, the Downtown Revitalization Committee, Friends of the Farmers Market, and the Business Relations Committee. I have a deep understanding of the processes and complexities of town government. I've been especially engaged in bringing more affordable housing options to Blacksburg and in downtown revitalization work, including the College Avenue Promenade and Market Square Park. I am passionate about what I believe is right, but I'm also a good listener, and I understand the art of compromise. I believe in civility and diplomacy and government staff and in elected officials. I have enormous energy. I'm very organized. I'm responsible. I have a strong work ethic. If I'm reelected, I will continue to be readily available to all the people of Blacksburg, and I will work tirelessly to live up to my family's motto, leave the woodpile higher. I hope you will read over my handbill, visit my website at andersonforcouncil.com, and share with me your questions, comments, and ideas. I welcome your help. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Lauren?
My sincere thank you to the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for organizing this forum for our community. This is an incredibly important election year for Blacksburg. Every level of leadership is going to change from mayor to town council, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this process. As a small business owner, employer, and mother of four school-aged children, I have a unique and valuable perspective and understand the needs of families and businesses. We all want our town to serve and support all of our residents. Blacksburg is a great place to live and retire, and we need to ensure we have senior housing that meets the needs of our elderly residents. Blacksburg is a fantastic place to raise a family, and we need to support family-friendly initiatives and activities. We want young professionals and millennials to choose Blacksburg and stay here to help create a vibrant and diverse community. And obviously, we want to support Virginia Tech students and faculty and staff as an integral part of our town. By nature, I am a compassionate and empathetic listener. I look forward to more open and engaged dialogue with Montgomery County and with Virginia Tech. Blacksburg's relationships regionally are critically important to our continued success. This is not a zero-sum game. When we have open and transparent dialogue about the needs of every party involved, we all benefit. One of my daily mantras is this, the only constant is change. We can either put our heads in the sand and hope the change doesn't affect us, or we can ride the wave and steer our ship in the direction we desire. We have inevitable change coming with the increase of students at Virginia Tech. Together as a community, we need to have a clear vision of how to welcome and support this growth. We need to find ways to embrace it and grow together. I want to thank you all for being so active in this election. Because this election is not about me or any of the candidates up here, it's about you and your voice, your concerns, and challenges and celebrations. I look forward to representing your voice on town council next year, and I hope I can count on your support on November 7th.
Karen?
Once again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for sponsoring this event, and everyone that came out tonight to attend. I moved to Blacksburg here in 1993 from Northern Virginia and immediately fell in love with the town because it wasn't Northern Virginia. I started my first business here as a student at Virginia Tech. As a business owner, I welcome the growth that's coming, but I believe that careful management is integral to not losing our small-town appeal. I believe that properties like the Blacksburg, the old, the old middle school property and the Blacksburg Baptist Church property provide unique opportunities to have something that can be an excellent complement to downtown. I feel that we need more parking in downtown. I would like to see the BT service expanded. I want to see the town-county relationships improve. If the opportunity is still available, I would like to pursue the purchase of a high school property for the town to continue with expanded parks and wrecks. I would like to work on our business-friendly relationship that the, that the town has. There's a lot of good people to choose from, but I would like to think that my background in business will bring a unique perspective to council, that, you know, I believe it's important to have a diverse group of council members from different backgrounds in life, from academia to civic organizations and in business as well. So I believe that a diverse group of thinkers can work on the challenges that we, that we're going to be facing as Virginia Tech grows over the next five or 10 years, and hopefully we can manage that growth well.
Susan?
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for hosting the forum this evening and for ensuring that Montgomery County has an informed electorate. I have been a resident of Blacksburg since 1991. Since coming here, I have owned my own business. I have worked for others, and for the past 17 years, I have been the executive director of the Lyric Theater. I care deeply about this community and have been actively involved in civic leadership for more than 25 years. This is not a new interest for me. My engagement started with PTA and scouting and progressed to town and regional activities, including service on numerous boards, commissions, and committees. You can read about them on my campaign flyer. Most of us choose to live in Blacksburg because it offers us a special quality of life. We know that Blacksburg is growing and that change is inevitable, but we don't have to sacrifice our way of life if we manage this growth wisely. I think it is essential to support policies that protect neighborhoods, but we also have to work with developers to help them create the right kinds of projects, ones that are economically viable and environmentally sustainable. I understand the challenges facing small businesses. We need to give them the tools they need to succeed. Quality businesses locate where they want to live and where they can recruit people. Investments in livability are investments in economic development. I have a breadth of experience in civic issues, established relationships throughout the region, and a fresh perspective that will make me an asset on town council. As a council member, you can count on me to be an active listener and facilitator. You can also be assured that I will be responsive to your concerns. Reasonable people can disagree, but if we work together, we can find solutions to the challenges that we face. And I hope I can have your vote on November 7th.
Thank you. Thank you all. Let's give our candidates a round of applause. I just want to also thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. It's important to hear from the people who want to represent us, and I think that the town of Blacksburg will be in good hands with whoever you vote for on November the eleventh. Seven, oh. November 7th, don't miss that. So thank you all, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, all. Odero.